And so I am calling the special call meeting to order. This was supposed to start at 6:00 PM. We are now at 6:05 on this, the first of November 2017. And if you would please stand for a brief invocation and pledges of allegiance. Heavenly thought, Father, we thank you for this group. We thank you for people that are interested in governing this city. Oh, Lord, help us to resolve the questions that we'll have in a way that's pleasing in your sight and that does the right things for the citizens of our city. In Christ's precious name we pray. Amen. Americans, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please. So item number four on our agenda, consider and take any action necessary regarding the job description, minimum qualifications, and advertising for position of interim city manager. Or interim city manager.
Hello? Am I there? Got it. I have some questions regarding this. It is my understanding, and I have spoke with others, this was to be a part-time interim city manager, was what we had decided to discuss and decided to have. And his duties were to oversee the day-to-day city operations, mail, email, telephone, but to specify that he could not have the responsibility of taking ordinances or policy, hiring or firing. His main thing would be keep the council updated and informed. And to me, part-time would be like Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So it was my understanding that it was to be part-time in this. I know all of these qualifications that you have written in this almost sound like it's a permanent city manager in that we would want him to have a master's degree. And it's, you've rung the requirements, this full-time position requires a bachelor's degree. But this is just to be an advertisement, it was my understanding, for the interim city manager. So were you planning to advertise the whole thing at one time? Julie?
No, it can certainly be changed to part-time. The description is just to give a general overview of the job, the details of the day-to-day things would really be explained to the candidate. And you know, when an offer is made or is part of the interview question, usually you want something that's being advertised to be a little shorter and more concise, just to grab their attention and get them interested.
Well, the first paragraph I know have a problem with, and for those in the audience, is "The city of Valentine, approximate population 3,046, is seeking an interim city manager to provide exceptional customer service and experienced positive leadership for a temporary, which I would like to see, part-time assignment while a search for a new city manager is conducted. Valentine is located near the fast-growing Iowa City Highway 5 corridor, just 45 miles north of Dallas, under the direction of the mayor and a five-member council. This position will administer Valentine's annual budget of whatever it is and its number of employees." This I have no problem with. It's the requirements, where it says preference, will be given to applicants with at least five years of upper management experience, including service as a city manager or city administrator in an organization of comparable size or larger, holding a master's degree in public, or business administration or related field is preferable. This full-time position, and you go into that, and are we ready to have this paragraph in there? Or do we need the, just the position summary at the top? Because it says "The competitive compensation package is negotiable depending upon the background and qualifications of the candidate." Now, send an electronic version of your current resume, salary history, list of five work-related preferences with a phone number. That's fine, but to me, we are just at this time advertising for a part-time city manager, interim city manager.
Yes, and that's fine. This is not an attempt by me to dictate to you what it should say. It's meant to be a starting point based on what you typically see for you all to give direction on any specifics that you want changed or added.
It sounds like, well, I was just made aware of another change. Part-time, I think it would be good to include that language in the first paragraph. Positive leadership for a temporary comma, part-time assignment. And then in the second paragraph, it all, here it talks about full-time too. This full-time position, and I guess it's the last full sentence, this full-time position requires a bachelor's degree in government or whatever, but that should also read part-time.
Okay. Well, actually, that second paragraph, do we want to tell them that we want all of these five years of upper management? Is that, is that what you're referring to, Mayor? And all these candidates also holding a master's degree?
Oh. Will we work with that? I think the requirements are, what the second paragraph said is just the preferences for the position, what we would like to see, where our wish list is, but nothing is bound by that. That's why it says preferences, also holding that will be preferred. When it says this full-time position, I don't think it represents the interim city manager. I think it's referencing the full-time city manager that we would be looking for, or the full-time position of city manager requires a bachelor's degree, as dictated by whatever the city ordinance is. I don't think the requirements are for, directly for the interim. I think it's just a further description of the position.
I think that last sentence would be very confusing if we left it in.
I agree. What about the next sentence? "The competitive compensation package is negotiable depending upon the background and qualifications of the candidate." Does this apply to an interim part-time?
Well, that's why I don't know if you're wanting for the person to be an employee or to be contract labor or what the preferences and how you would want that to be structured.
What's the norm or the recommendation? I mean, what have you seen out there?
Usually they're contract, because many of them, thank you, many of them come from the companies that do the searches, and so they provide them on a contract basis, because really they work for that search company and they contract them out. But you could certainly do it either way. If they're an employee, then you can get into benefits and things like that. But if they're part-time and stayed below the maximum number of hours to be eligible for benefits, then applicant's a non-issue.
I would think you would not want it to be an employee position, way to come in.
What would the contract bind us to? Are we talking about a contract?
No, I just, well, for-
Just a general contract.
When I say contract, I'm referring to distinction that the Internal Revenue Service makes as between whether or not someone is an employee or they're contract labor. It relates to whether you withhold taxes or they pay the rent taxes, things like that.
Thank you. Thanks. Agreed.
And each person's spot, each councilman's spot, and then to Julie, I've given a copy of something that might be a good example, or someone that we may want to talk with. It's, this is from Kerry Swett of Interim City Manager Services. And he's given me an example of what, and a resume on someone who lives in Garland. And he's told me here what they expect that person to be paying.
Well, until we advertise, I do not believe we should even consider anybody's until this has gone up. We can't just, can we start considering these before we have advertised?
I'm not sure that we want to right now. I mean, I think we do want to advertise first, but here's a sample, and a pretty good resume. So we can begin to collect them. I have one that was sent out to all the councilmen from an individual who was wanting to work here. So I don't know, we can collect resumes.
I have all of stuff, so maybe we could just, after this has been advertised for, what, 30 days, and see what all we have in that area, add them, and put them all together to be considered? Is that a-
Yeah, that's a very long time to wait to start interviewing, because typically if you wait too long, if you start calling, if you start calling some of the candidates who applied first, they may have already found other positions.
Okay, say this goes in Reader this week. This is Wednesday. It's too late this week. So it would be next week before it would even be advertised in the Reader, and we need to put it in other magazines. So what is the timeframe on the advertisement of this? Because we wouldn't want it just on our website or on the internet. We really want to put it out there. So we have to find out what the timeline on that would be also in all fairness.
One of the most common places that you see advertisements for city positions is the Texas Municipal League's website. They do charge a very nominal amount for that. I think they, theirs is the next day, I think. I mean, theirs is just a day or two once you send it to them to get it onto their website.
Because if we're a member of the city, they don't charge us.
Oh, Jennifer says, and Van Alstine is a member of the city, there would be no charge.
Thank you.
All right, Will, do we need to work up an advertisement again? This could be part of-
That's what this, yes, that's what this is.
Wouldn't this be an advertisement?
Yes.
With the changes that the mayor had said about it being a part-time interim in the-
Contract.
-sentence, and in the second, and then where it says leadership for a temporary part-time assignment, I believe that's what you said, Mayor. And then, and the requirements to delete the last sentence. And then when it says "The competitive compensation package is negotiable depending upon the background and qualifications of the candidate," this will be a contract labor position?
Yeah, we can clarify that, too.
And then the last sentence is as written.
So on the sentence, the full-time position, underneath the requirements, why do we want to delete the sentence instead of just subbing part-time to full-time?
I actually think that a bachelor's degree, I would ask the question of actually, is it really necessary? If you have experience, can it not be in lieu of a bachelor's degree? So I really don't like the requirement. If you have 25 years of experience, I'm thinking you're just as good as having a
So when we delete that last sentence, can we detail off this sentence before about the class seat driver's license? And then, you know, we already got the part-time specified above.
Let me just say that this part-time position requires a bachelor's degree for equitable-
Experience in lieu. Or equivalent experience, yeah.
All right, that's a, we have to make a motion on that, or we just give the direction more?
Let me ask one question. I think it came out new, and I honestly don't know if it applies, Julie. I know they started to say whether you could ask for salary history or not. Is there any issues around asking for that?
No.
All right. I thought there was new rulings that came out that said you can't ask for those anymore, but maybe it's, it's not a law or rule, maybe it's something that they're, everybody's just sort of changing.
So if we pass this with the corrections that we have said, you will correct it, send each council member a copy, and then will Jennifer be in charge of advertising for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the clarification. In that case, I make the motion that we approve this with the corrections that have been stated.
I'll second with the correction.
All right, we have a motion, a second, and more discussion. All right. I see no hands. All in favor?
Yes.
And is unanimous? Okay.
Do you have to go high above?
Aye.
All right, understood.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Now, okay, next. Consider and take any action necessary regarding amending the ordinance that describes the duties of the city manager. That's item number one. And we have a copy of the proposed ordinance here. And just, it lacks a couple of dates, I think, and that's all, that's highlighted. Also, in section 2-69 on the second page, it says that the city manager, yeah, I'll read the whole thing. "The city manager shall serve as personnel manager, city treasurer, and city purchasing agent. The office is vested with such powers and duties of such offices." Additionally, it says "All city employees shall be directly under the authority," but then we just decided that we need to call our former city clerk, the city secretary. Down here it's taken care of. It says in B, "The city manager shall be responsible for the appointment and removal of all employees except employees who are officers," and that would include the secretary. So I was going to propose up in part A again, where it says additionally, "All city employees," then in parentheses, we say, "except those, excepting those listed in B below." Is that sensible?
It might, it may be simpler to just "except employees who are officers," just to use the same phrase.
Part A, it sounds-
Taking a worse than, employees who are officers, officers excepting city officers.
That's what Julie suggested. And that sounds fine with B. Is there any other corrections? Anyone find anything?
Well, just, go ahead, Ms. Crowell.
I'm still confused then if there is the city secretary, if the city secretary becomes the officer, how are we handling anybody that directly reports to the city secretary
And what you're saying, he does not have that title, he still is considered a clerk?
Well, there are several issues y'all should think about in regards to this ordinance. One is, right now, the city clerk performs many duties that are not listed as the duties of that office, and I presume those are delegated by city manager. So if the city secretary becomes equal to the city manager on the organization chart, and they're both under the council, then you're taking away the city manager's ability to delegate those things to that person. So who's going to perform all of those tasks? And then the second issue, which is what councilmember Crowell was talking about, is right now, I believe, and Jennifer can correct it for one, there are employees, she's a department head, and there are employees that report to her as a department head. So would they continue to report to her, or would they report to a city manager? And are they performing tasks that are of the city secretary's office, or are those employees performing tasks that are really tasks that were delegated by the city manager? So there may be just a few larger issues you may want to think through.
Is there such a thing as a clerk slash secretary?
Not that I ever heard about it.
Doesn't, I mean, all the city, all the city employees report to city manager.
Right.
The city secretary, right, well, they should. And then, so, but the city clerk or city secretary is an officer. Still has to report to the city manager, and he's still responsible for everything, whomever the city manager would be. You don't have two equal people trying to run a city.
Well, if he cannot terminate or discipline, and he's, you have a city manager directing the city secretary to do A, but the council has given the direction that she should do B, who is she-
She should still be under the city.
Julie, how does this work in another, in your other cities?
They, they are very, you know, keep in mind, general law of city manager government is not the most common type of city, but just as an example, in, in those home rule cities with charters don't have the constraints that you all have with Chapter 22 of the Local Government Code. But in Dennison, the charter has the city manager appointing that, managing that position. In Providence Village, and in Anna, and in Pila Point, it's a city council appointment, and they report to the council. In Commerce, in Salina, the person is under the city manager, but any decisions to hire or fire have to be confirmed by the city council. So if the city manager does it, but he doesn't really have final say-so, he is also that way. And then the other one I looked at, in Newark, they have a city administrator, and the city administrator does all the city secretary tasks, and there's not a separate city secretary.
Isn't it in some places that he has the authority to designate, to designate all those duties to the clerk? The city manager does.
If that person is a clerk, yes, but you're talking about two different things, clerk and secretary. Correct?
Yes.
Whatever they are, do we hear it?
I'm sorry. My question was, we're talking about two different things. A city manager can direct the clerk and reassign duties and whatnot, as long as they're a clerk and they're not an officer. If they're a secretary, they're an officer. So there was two, we're talking about two different things. Right?
You can be, yes, but somebody needs to be the officer tasked with the duties of the office that are listed in the state law that a city secretary is supposed to do. Right now, the Van Alstine Code of ordinances gives all of those duties that are in the state law to the city clerk.
But it does stay in the information that you just sent us, that several sections of the Texas state code reference the city secretary or city clerk, perhaps indicating that these offices are synonymous.
Yes.
So-
It's really a name, I mean-
Is this such an issue at this time?
I don't think the name is really an issue. I think, I think the duties that the person is performing tell you whether they are holding an office or not versus what you call the position.
Well, it seems that this needs a lot, a lot of work. And I know that the staff over there for a long time has been supervised by Jennifer, our former city clerk. And so-
Incurrature.
I was gonna say.
Try and hear it.
So if we go ahead and pass this, it would not really change Jennifer's duties at all, would it? In any way? Because that's the only issue with this ordinance, except for the addition that the mayor wants. So would it-
Well, it would, because it takes, it takes away the city manager's authority to delegate non-city clerk tasks if they become, if that position is not under the city manager but is equal to the city manager.
Then do we need to table this till it's clarified?
I think we need to understand the job responsibilities that the city clerk has right now, because some of those duties, you're going to tell us, should the law of the city clerk, some of them you're telling us could be delegated. So if, I mean, there's things about, could some of those staff, who probably perform some of that, go underneath the city manager? If we desire that the city clerk is a peer or, and checks and balances to the city manager, but we got to know what her roles and responsibilities are, and what can be separated if we desire to make that role a peer to the city manager. Correct?
Correct. Because your other choice would be for this, for all employees, including the city clerk or secretary, to be under the city manager, but with the council having that confirmation or veto ability if the city manager terminates. The city council could say-
Correct.
-no, et cetera, that hybrid system that some cities use.
Okay, isn't the premise here, Julie, that what we're talking about is if we separate them and make them peers, we're talking about the ability to have a checks and balance system? Because otherwise, what would be the benefit of it? Is that ultimately what we're talking about?
Yeah, it makes the person more independent, and it gives you two, two different people reporting directly to you in city hall instead of one. But with the number of employees that you have, it gets complicated to have that separation because there's not enough other people. I don't know, the employees that matter about-
Would she not be on the same level as the police chief, the fire chief, the Department of Public Works supervisor?
That's what level she's on now.
And what should it be changed to? If it's not, why would she not be on the same level as the rest of them in that she has employees under her that answer to her in city hall?
She can be. The ultimate issue is Chapter 22, at the end of the day, gives that final authority to the council over who the city secretary is. The council can delegate that to a manager and just retain that veto authority should a city manager, you know, terminate and you don't want to. That in itself could operate at city hall, to the city manager wants somebody to not work there anymore, and the council disagrees with that. But that ultimately is a power that state law lays with the council.
I kind of think functionally with how the city runs currently, with a lot of folks wearing different hats, us as a council meeting once or twice a month to determine the tasks of the city manager could be fairly tricky. That's just a concern that I have.
So what are your recommendations for this regarding the city secretary clerk?
My recommendation would be maybe to take a little bit more time to think about it and learn what all the tasks are that need to be performed at city hall by Jennifer and others. And then- And then, um, see what makes the most sense for Van Alstine. And it's, it's not an emergency. You can even wait, say, an interim or a permanent person and get their input and opinion on what they've done in other cities and what worked well for them.
So then it would be to table this until a later date?
Yes. I make a motion that we table it, but in the eye, could we please get the job responsibilities and accountabilities for Jennifer's role currently and the roles underneath her and, and what specifically they're accountable for? Because they're going to go as part of that movement too. But without understanding their roles and accountabilities, we, we don't know what we want to leave and what we want to send.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. That's, that's a motion to table and, and to work on this and get a, a good list of, of the duties of the city secretary and the, and her assistants. Is, is there any more discussion? All right, all my favorite.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. All right. And everybody's favorite, item number six is adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn, so.
All right. Any objections? We have to go back. Okay, well, we've got some first thing reserved, so let's, let's have a little chat. Thank you. Okay, and the time is, the time is six thirty-seven. And so-
Applicants are ready. All right, item one, call this special meeting order. We've done it. We will open public hearings as follows. Item two on our agenda, conduct a public hearing regarding the request by the owner agent of the property being described as approximately 0.6176 acre tract of land. From a single-family residential district, S F one, and commercial district, C one, to a planned development with a base zoning of commercial district one, C one, with parking lot, automobile, and single-family dwelling detached as allowed additional uses. Also a waiver to the masonry screening law requirement, area setback, height, and coverage regulations, and concrete parking material in the expansion of the parking is desired. Property is described as divisions, Van Alstine Lot Three, lot, part of S D ten, more commonly known as four seven five, Van Alstine Parkway, and four nine five, S D ten, formerly known as three fifteen, West Van Alstine Parkway. This is property, a restaurant in the home which is located to the east of that home. Does anyone here would like to speak to this application? Anyone here that has any questions, comments, or observations, objections to the request to rezonate this property as a planned development? Second call for comments from the public. Any questions about where it's located, what it is, what they want to do? Third call for vote comment, what, sir?
What do they want to do?
This is the property that has been under discussion for some time. And I believe they got some input from the city attorney. As you know, they have expanded the parking into the residential lot next to the current restaurant. But both buildings are owned by the same person, is my understanding. And the thought was, hey, it's two different zonings, we could make this one zoning as a PD with a base zoning of commercial, but allow residential on the strap also. And that might alleviate some of the-
Car is backing into the duct when it gets dark.
I'm sorry, second in.
Car is backing.
Any other questions or comments? It is, it is, in its nature, a zoning change with requests regarding. Hearing no other questions or comments, we will close the public hearing on item two and move to item three. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of the property being described as approximately thirty-three point eight acre tract of land from a single-family residential district, S F one, zoning to planned development. Property is described as a tract of land situated in the J and K survey. Left track number seven, seven zero, City Van Alstine Racing County, Texas. Subject tract, leaving a portion of the tract conveyed to Felix Land, partners bill three, according to the deed recorded in document number two thousand seven dash zero 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 two nine three four nine of the official public records based in Van Alstine, Texas. And being a portion of the tract conveyed to the Van Alstine ISD, according to the deed recorded in document number two zero one six dash point seven seven one six. And being a portion of the tract conveyed to Van Alstine ISD, according to the deed recorded in volume seventeen forty-eight, page two fifty-one, D records based in Van Alstine, Texas. And being a portion of the tract conveyed to the Van Alstine ISD, according to the deed recorded in volume ten seventy-one, page forty. And being all of the tract conveyed to Van Alstine ISD, according to the deed recorded in volume twelve oh eight, page seven ninety-nine. Generally located south of Van Alstine Middle School, which is at thirteen fourteen North Quaker Street, east of Graywood Drive, west of North Quaker Street, and north of Wising County. This is currently single-family one. Request is to rezonate to a planned development. Will be used for residential. We've seen a preliminary plan. Is there any questions, comments, observations? Would anyone like to speak to this? Yes, sir?
I represent the owner and developer. For the record. Is it on?
Okay, on hold.
On hold, okay. For the record, Gray Council Aspires Engineering, Plano, Texas. And we're requesting a zoning change from S F one to a PD with the, with the base zoning as S F one with three stipulations. First, just briefly, is to reduce the front yard setbacks on seven lots on the west side of the property, one-tiered lots. And the reasoning is the, that hurricane creek encroaches into the backyard. And what we're trying to do is just provide a little bit more desirable backyard for when the home builder comes in and then the home builder. So basically, we're getting five yard, uh, five feet back from taking account of the yard and the creek is encroaching ten feet. So, so basically, we're losing five feet to it in the back. So instead of, we're losing ten to the home. Okay, so the second stipulation is that there are ten lots throughout the development that are either on highbrows or they're getting pinched just by the geometry of the development. And so what we're trying to do is, again, reduce the backyard by, by five feet just to give the home builder a more desirable path and footprint for the home. And the third stipulation is that across the board for all, a hundred and eleven lots, that would be hundred, hundred and eleven lots, that would reduce the side yard from, from ten feet to five feet. And that would accommodate a larger footprint and the option for a three-car garage for the whole lot. And again, it's just to make lots more desirable and to provide a better development for the city. And that's the reason for the request. So we ask for your consideration. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Welcome to Van Alstine. Thanks for that explanation. It's still in the public hearing phase of that, so if anyone would like to comment on the request or anything they've just called, now is the time to do so. We have math behind this. Any questions on that? Building on the northwest side with the Sanford Elementary School currently under construction. You can see Highway five coming down the west side, but they consider the east side, Graywood Heights. On the southwest corner, there's Palladium, also under construction.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
We're the only single-family home on the last again. And our question is, there an entrance into this development from Highway five, except through the school, through a Virginia school's window?
There is only that road that you see on this map. I should say direction to it is this road, you have to be named until it's planted, which is a new road, middle school right here. So it's kind of at the south end of the middle school parking lot. And there was also, um, this road is being, comes out Highway five, Voice Calhoun is right in this area.
Right, that's Wising Gate.
And yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the, then the southern entrance into this development, that's, did you say that was coming in right here?
There is. I believe that's not.
No, it's not.
Comes in from the south and then, of course, Graywood will be extended down to Wising Gate as part of the Palladium project. Good questions. If there could be any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, sir. Please average homes on it. Can I answer that?
I would just, I would say around twenty-five hundred square foot. I'm, I don't want to speak totally for the home builder, they're not present, but-
It's a non-blinding answer. It's going, it's going to clarify your question, isn't it?
Accommodating up two point five or up two point five. Yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily the answer.
What's the make man of six truck?
Well, yes, the home builder has submitted preliminary plans, different, various models that they have that range from about eighteen hundred square feet up to three thousand. So twenty-five hundred is kind of their target market, but just to answer that question.
Thank you, lady. Any other questions or comments? Last call for questions or comments on the request to rezonate to a planned development. Hearing done, we would declare the public hearing to be closed. You mean on to item four, you can, you may get back to your place. Consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of minutes from September twentieth, twenty seventeen, with a minimum. We'll have that in fact. Jennifer sent us via email. I'm sure they'll save it as a call. This would be a kind of- I move that we approve the September twentieth meeting minutes. Motion for approval. Just leave a second of that. Any further comments or questions from favor of the committee minutes? Please allow.
Aye.
I am sure approved. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Paul. Just consider to take any action, Mr. Regarding your request, party, item, property being described as approximately zero point six one seven six acre tract of land from single-family residential and commercial to planned development. And there's no objection or dispense with reading of the rest of that paragraph as we just covered in the public hearing. This is a time for the commission to address this. Now, yes, I will start with a question to the city staff. The ordinance requires a plant of some type to be submitted. Diana, have we received such an item? Or company to request? So I will mention that I didn't receive an email today regarding this request. And she sent in a couple pictures. Jennifer, do you have those pictures that she sent that you can? One of the things that, this is from the resident of Van Alstine who lives just to the south of the restaurant, so her local property would be on facing Jefferson, the parking lot of the restaurant. She's concerned that her fence is, has things leaning against it. She has trash and her car. And basically, the gist of the email was, we should hold the restaurant owner to the standards as outlined in existing ordinances. So that is a picture of the dumpster, which is on the restaurant property. There is a, it's hard to tell, but there's a pile of brush there between dumpster and the fence, which is on prior property. And there's also some fence panels and, yeah, a base of cement or on a pallet that's actually probably on the restaurant property, but there are also some pallets that we- So anyway, be aware of that, commissioners, that there is at least one voice from the nearby resident who has noted at the meeting tonight that there's a request that we stick to guidelines.
Defensive property owner owns a joint property and is trying to figure out how to make this all work. I kind of lean towards the planned development solution that the attorney suggested, however, I've got some concern with the request for waivers on the item.
Okay. This is another item to be a separation.
I'm amazed to read the concrete parking lot. So now, a quick question on the history. This was a restaurant before he bought it. I think it was Jack Shack. Did we provide at that time, did we give them some waiver?
The waivers on the concrete didn't come in until you adopted new subdivision ordinance in 2015. So any, in subsequent, the parking lot was improved at that point. That's, once the subdivision ordinance took effect in 2015 is when the concrete requirements came on board. The setbacks in the front yard were existing, so they're pre-existing condition, the vestibule and entryway. So I, I don't know when that was added on or, there were, there was no building permit history on that. So that was existing prior. The masonry screening is also part of the subdivision ordinance, so those two things came in as of the 2015 adoption date.
I personally, for the reason, Jennifer, that this is, it was resolved, so the person sitting on the east side now has a parking lot, he has his back yard or side yard. Yes, the restaurant is one property and the other is another property. So it's literally, now that the owner discussed with this restaurant next one, he might get-
Some, excuse me, something inside-
Some, excuse me, some insight, sir, sorry, who are you?
I'm the owner of a set property there.
Good, you are recognized.
Just look inside of the long-term land areas. I'm planning to move that house, and the only way to why I'm asking to have its own time development, that's the only way I can live in my house, and obviously work next door. If I were to have re-planted properties, the house would remain residential and then the official parking lot would be commercial. But by zoning the house commercial, I cannot live there, is what the city told me. So I figured if it's all zone planned development, I'm in the process of buying to manage it, and also I'm planning to move that house too. And at some point, both lots will be replanted once over the block, instead of having two different properties. And the long-term goal is, where the house can exist, convert that to more parking lot for the business, as business goes, I'll be needing more parking lot. And that is my current location, my parking lot's still too small to handle all this stuff from that. So the suggestion, let's say attorney said, well, it's a whole plot, it's planned, okay, then I'm going to live there until outside of the house. And I've already got plenty of time to move the house, and I'm in the process of purchasing land to move the house onto. But this would be within a year, ten year, half before the house gets moved. It births to those trees, those trees that were trimmed last year. So it's not like they've been there for a year. And those fence belts were the original fence that wasn't put between the restaurant and the house, to replace the fence that used to exist. But since I wasn't allowed to, that fence sat there for almost a year before they were used to put between the house and the apartment, so it's a red for the house. That's why that's still there.
Okay. Our resident nearby, your neighbor claims it's actually on her property, the fence is a foot on her property, and touching the fence is on their property. One of her complaints.
Or a fence that's on the southern part of both restaurant and the house, where they're before the property. So if that fence is on, they said it's on their property.
That's what this problem claims, it's because that you can see in that picture, it is actually on her property by a foot.
That's the fence.
Good, thanks for your comments. I mean, ideally, we would have a screening wall of some type between the restaurant and any residential property. My concern, I think, not so much with the owner of residence to the east, but more so to the existing residents to the south. And the only thing that is there currently is the fence that longs to go somewhere, as I understand it. Now, we have an issue that we addressed before, not so much here at the commissioner level, but at council level, of you don't want to have two fences, back to back and either, with a gap in between those two, and it's not easy to maintain and leads to other issues as well, so I'm not recommending all the fence, I think. I did notice, as I checked it out on my way home tonight, that the fence is a little more to the west, has at least one dented metal post. No telling when that happened or how that happened, but I, it occurred to me that the metal post, as you might have noticed in those pictures, is on the restaurant side of the fence. People who are parking in the parking lot could easily back up into the fence with some private property. My thought for that would be that we could require the restaurant owner to put a parking barrier, metal pole fence perhaps on his property to protect the neighbor's fence behind him, to keep cars from backing into it. And we also define a public, so it's clear where any storage is allowed, where dumpsters allow, or south. Just the thought that I had is what we need.
Are you talking about traffic fence, are you talking about like cement post, metal rail kind of deal?
That's just kind of a layer of. Yeah. Good, kind of thing, yeah.
And just a little more insight, I haven't touched that front fence for fear of maybe going to be wrong, I just wanted to take it once in. One problem, I think, I'd like to repair that fence. So I, I'm aware that the fence has been kicked in and pushed in and backed into, so.
It could have happened last week, could have been five years ago, I guess, no way to tell, but it's it just brought to my mind the potential of there for additional use. Well, anyway, that's, that's one thing, the question of concrete versus gravel. I see both sides of that discussion, so I'm not sure. At this point, we really take a stand in that, if you guys feel stronger. We'll try.
Is it on?
Anyway, that's, that's the one thing that I thought that we ought to insist on, is some type of barrier between restaurant parking and private property to the south.
Didn't we not come up with the ordinance of what we had, like a commercial practice? Or we talked about, did we not create one? Hasn't come up before. A dual.
Right. Mr. McManus seeks recognition.
Uh, we have had one experience where a commercial development came in adjacent to a residential existing fence, and that was the Golden Chick.
Yes.
And the commission and the council approved a living screen, instead of removing the residential fence, they, they approved a living screen of fourteen years and so that it would grow up between the Golden Chick and, and the fence behind it. So that's the only other, since, since the new regulations have been installed and everything else, that's the only conflict where this has happened, this is the second.
Mr. Reed's question was specifically about living in residence that's selling commercials. Are you aware of any provision for that in our ordinance?
I know we talked about it, creating one, and I just couldn't remember if we had. If, that would be part of the CO, and I don't, I don't, you know, if there is, it's not known at the city otherwise, that would be.
The only thing I know of is in the central business district, we allow residences upstairs.
Upstairs, but that's, that's in, that's allowed by zoning.
Correct, I'm not aware of it, it's made for to live on commercial property. So, in the school, it seems to be really bad. All right, anyway, that's my thoughts. You can live with the gravel, it's not easy though, if you can be protective of your space to the south. And show that on the cycle, on some kind of parking area, like a forum, and two or three feet out, high for no garden. It's crazy.
I'm on line with, go ahead and make the plan development. The setbacks are fine, it's already done, and I don't see a tearing down of the building, the rebuild report to the masonry specific. Some kind of modified fence to protect the back, this is a smart idea. I do kind of lean towards concrete and parking lot, just because the weather just tears it, tears it up. The distance to be upgraded. And we also, yeah, we've kind of set that as a standard before. That we do need to go with the concrete parking, that's great. No, I just mentioned that we, we'd already enforced that for the car lot. So if you'd like, I'll go to motion.
I am ready for motion, sir.
I'd like to move that, in regards to this property, we approve, recommend approval for planned development with base zoning of commercial district dashboard and C one with a parking lot. Automobile, single-family glowing detached, has allowed additional uses. I would further recommend that the council require a protective fence built at the back of the parking lot to protect the fence to the south. And enforce the concrete parking material in the expansion of the parking lot.
You have a motion, just a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, is there any further comments, questions? Observations from the commission? Hearing none, it's time to vote, I'm in favor of placing a aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion, give us the nine in the unanimous, thank you. We move to item six, considering taking the action necessary regarding a request by the owner of the agent of the property being described as a personally thirty-two point eight acre tract of land from single-family residential district zoning to planned development zoning. With no objections, I will dispense with the reading of the rest of that paragraph as we just covered it in the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the commission at this time?
Just to clarify, from the drawing, are the, it's the eight or so lots that are numbered and not highlighted that we're talking about?
You can come forward, sir.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Reduction on the setbacks on seven lots was right there.
Yes, you're right. These lots are back up to Hurricane Creek.
Okay. Okay, while you're there, man.
Okay.
What was it? Ten lots.
The ten, yeah, the ten lots are shown around the corners of the eyebrows, and then the corners for the geometry, and then one up here too.
So extended, in, in more plain language, the house is basically being pushed back from the lot, and rear setbacks are being reduced?
The house is staying well on these, the house is staying where it is, and the, and the house is encroaching upon the twenty-five foot setback in the rear yards.
Okay.
That's these areas here.
So front side of it will be met, it's the rear side of it?
Yeah, the front, it will be met, the back is not, well, these areas that are adjacent to the school, G C B C and the parks.
Okay, that's just because the lot is, that's kind of going to sort of widen the house back. A wide enough piece of land.
And keep the, keep the frontage widened up, so they just separate. And then these here, the house is being much forward. Are we talking six thousand foot offs from yours?
Uh, they're all seventy-five hundred, other than the seven lots.
And the ones that, here's, I think, below five, around sixty-eight hundred. And in all honesty, we could keep them the seventy-five hundred minimum, but then there's a maintenance issue with the ten feet in the back where the creek's running. So we're making that ten feet that we're reducing the lot, we're making that ten feet open, open space to be maintained by nature.
Okay, that was a question I had, so there will be no, there will be a fence on those seven lots?
There's a retaining wall that's going to be on the rear parking lines, okay?
The west side.
On the west side, yes, and there will be, and there will be sleeves for a residential fence, and so there will be a fence.
Okay. But there are some.
And there will be access to that area from Williams, Williams Way, future Williams Way.
This, the southwest, is that a hedge basin?
Yes, that's a detention point, a hedge pond.
Yeah, that's a detention pond similar to that very northwest corner of Georgetown, Ettlemont. That picks up the extra runoff from the extra development.
Will there be some type of wall on the south side of these homes?
Yes, there, there's a masonry, yeah, they haven't asked for variance on that, so there's a masonry wall on the north side of Glyssen Gate, and also along the parkland to the west.
And we're going to extend Glyssen Gate through the field, because there is no corner normally of Glyssen Gate right now.
Right, correct, it's going to be the improvements from, say, Highway five, along the frontage of our, our property on the south, and then over to Palladium, will be, the design is, it's.
Coming, it's coming too.
Yes. Hopefully, we'll run somewhat concurrently the construction of the residential development.
So normally, there would be some dedication of parkland, there are some laying of dollars where we put in this room and used elsewhere in the city.
Yes, this and the other lot across Graywood have discussed parkland, that, parkland fee instead of that, and we love to, since they backed up to North Park, we look to convert that, their park money to North Park to help in that development.
Any other questions, please, commissioner?
Based on previous expressions from the meeting here months to ago, y'all, because I know as well.
Please do.
I'd note that we approve, or recommend approval for zoning this area to planned development as well.
Motion to recommend that the request be approved to the planned development? Yes. I have a motion in a second, no further discussions, comments, observations. Hearing none, it's time to vote, I'm in favor of placing a aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, sir. Moving on to item seven. Considering taking the action necessary regarding a proposed final plan, which we have in progress, for Sanford Park being thirty-two point eight acre tract of land situated in J. McKinnon survey of ten to twenty seven acres. And if there's no objections, I'll be trying to read the rest of that paragraph, because it is the same as the disparted we just discussed. Okay, there has page two of the platform. Okay. Okay, so here we have detailed analysis. I will ask a normal question, Mr. McManus, have you examined that, and have you went, it to be in conformance?
It is in conformance if the council approves the P D zoning address approved.
Thank you, sir.
So I would make any motion contingent upon the approval of the P D zoning.
Thank you.
This, you are actually building this road, and unlike other developers, you're not just giving money to the city to develop it, avoiding they.
Which road are you talking about?
Glyssen Gate. Glyssen Gate will have to be built in order for this to happen.
Correct, and, and, and the developer of Sanford Park is, is participating in the cost of Glyssen Gate. It's being, it's being escrow.
Okay, that's what, well, I mean, it's for guest, but the road will be built.
It will.
We've had other ones where the city took the money for future development, instead of having the road done, and that's why I want to make sure this road is actually being built.
It is scheduled with the concurrent, we are going to compare, combine their escrowed amount for Glyssen Gate with Palladium's escrow for Glyssen Gate and Graywood. And then the school district has about a hundred and forty feet of gray wood at the north end, and then the history maker has a hundred and forty feet, we're combining all those funds, and the city will be designing and building a project in conjunction with the subdivision development.
Good question. Are there to be any others? Any observations regarding the plan?
We want to be consistent, and the last time we approved a P D, and this is a plan, so just regarding. That'll come in later.
Yeah, we haven't actually seen the P D ordinance on these things. It's hard for me to read them here, I should be able to check that out. The street width?
Thirty, thirty-one feet.
The northern road street that goes in front of the school will be thirty-seven foot back. Yeah, all the proposed civil, we're in the process of finalizing the plans, our informants, the Lance, Dan, Searwitz. Our informants, the Lance, the transpired question commissioner, the landscape, um, walls and the common areas are all in compliance with subdivision ordinance, so. Right, and, but that's, that's under, that's not necessarily with the plaque, but that's. If, if they do vary anything, we will be coming back for a variance. But right now they are, they are in conformance with all city requirements.
I see all these streets are named after former teachers.
I believe so.
Other than Yellow Bus Road.
Yeah, other than Yellow Bus Road, that is correct.
I'm ready for a motion. I make a motion that we approve or recommend approval for the proposed final plan for Sanford Park. P D.
Yes.
Okay. A motion to recommend approval of the final plan, contingent on the city council approval of the planned development that we just recommended. Is there a second?
I will second that.
A motion and a second and no further discussion or comment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let us prove to the city council, continue against P D. I have made on our agenda, considering taking the action necessary regarding the recommended appointment of an applicant for sure in the planning and zoning commission, place three. We have that application, we have that candidate with us actually. Leading to that placing. There it is. Last two pages. Mr. Paul Nobles, who's with us tonight, Mr. Paul. Does apply to the committee. Is that the only application we have before set this time? Okay, I will point out that fate has taken a turn and with the resignation of one of our commissioners, we actually have two openings, as we discussed. To my understanding, we had an application a while back for reappointment, Mr. Wayne Womack. Council declined to take action on that, although six, eight weeks ago. In my mind, that is still an open question for council to consider. Since it was neither denied nor approved. In my view, having attended that meeting. If that application still exists and Mr. Womack is still willing to do that, you may have two applicants for two positions. There is nothing in the ordinance, as far as I know, that says we need to take action on this. It's strictly up to city council. As you all know, as commissioners, we serve the higher level council. We can, and ask if we want to have a recommendation, it's up to you guys.
Certainly, and no reason. Well, I'd certainly thank Mr. Nobles for making the application volunteer.
Okay, I certainly have no objection. We look forward to starting the call. That's my, do you want any question? The council can, if that is a recommendation, if they are showing up. Back to our agenda. Item nine, adjourn the special board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no, we have.
City staff, any, any, any city staff who'd like us to be aware of?
Several things, we'll, we'll discuss several things during the joint work session coming up. We've got a couple more applications coming in and development all around is imminent, so reason for the joint work.
Very good. Seven week after. Soon as we adjourn. All right, do you have a special comment?
The slogan tonight, I would like to. Adjourn. I'll move if we adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item ten, we'll call the order of the joint work session meeting for the team in zoning in the city council. I'm in favor. You only have this position to mayor and council. We'll find towards the. All right, the time is, um, seven thirty P M. And we're going to, uh, call order the joint work session meeting. And I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Leonard McNamara.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody's opportunity, uh, to have this joint work session. As you can see, the last P and Z meeting, we have several issues where a lot of P D and a lot of variances are coming in. Want to get some general direction and guidance from the council, but also give you the history of what's in the current ordinances and how we can go forward. And just kind of have an idea of how we're gonna move forward as a city.
Steve, can you go in and speak into the mic?
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, so it, it's, uh, it's kind of a, get everybody come together, understand all the requirements and, and that the city staff is having to enforce and then we're, you know, you're, you're seeing a lot of P D ordinances, a lot of variances coming forward, so wanted to talk about how we move forward with that. And the first part of the agenda, if you go to the general please, is looking at the zoning ordinance. Uh, obviously, it's been around since two thousand and three, last updated in two thousand and eight. Uh, it is, uh, governs of the land uses, things like that. The subdivision ordinance was approved in two thousand and fifteen, which improved all of the construction standards. You have concrete parking lots on commercial, concrete streets, underground drainage, all that is now part of your current ordinance. So any new development comes in or redevelopment that comes in that is commercial has to require, is required to need that. Residential is still under the zoning purview. For example, parking lots and driveways in residential can be concrete, asphalt, or a, what they call a type-two base rock. Uh, there is no such thing as a type-two base rock in, there's a class-two subgrade in Techstock, but that's the closest thing I get. It's got to be number two in. So that's the standard that I apply to any residential that comes in at that point. Uh, and then we're in the process of updating the master land use plan. We just started with the gateway study, um, doing the C B D and the industrial park, but that's gonna expand out. You've all seen the big yellow map that's at the back here. Uh, the current land use plan has what that is, seventy square miles. All the yellow is residential, red is commercial, and all the industrial park is gray. You've got in your folders, you have copies of those maps that you can pull out and take a look at, so I love that for you. Uh, wanted to kind of go through, uh, the maps with you, uh, because, uh, at, at the back of the maps, there is the nineteen sixty-six city limit ordinance that was passed by the city council that created the seventy mile, seventy, seventy square mile area. Basically, that is the city limits. And, uh, it should be the first map in the, yes.
What's the, are you?
It's, uh, city limits nineteen sixty-six. Oh, under, under, yeah, under, uh, yeah, under white. Uh, that, this barrier set up, the city limits as it is right now, and then created, uh, the seventy square miles that is the city. The city is currently only incorporated on the very next map, you see current city limits. The gray area is the four square miles that represent the current city of Van Alstine. The two-foot strip, the red, the red line that goes around that seventy square miles is also the city limits. But obviously, being two-foot wide and in the middle of roadway can't be developed upon, it need any code. So everything we're doing right now is in that limit. The blue lines on that, on the outside of that, or the E T J, which is a half mile outside your existing city limit. And, uh, if you look at the back map, the gray area is the current city limit around seventy-five and then the ring around that is the E T J. And that creates those two white and unfiltered projects, which we lovingly call the donut hole at city hall. Because those are areas that are governed by the, Captain Grayson County. The, the city has no say in any of those properties at this point in the U. Oh, okay, please. The, the city has no, uh, purview over those properties at this point. It is Grayson County, Grayson County standards and Grayson County, uh, requirements and subdivision. So what, what I wanted to, you know, the reason we need to talk about that is you're in a unique situation. We have some county, some E T J, some city limits. City, city limits are easy. They have to, they have to comply with your zoning ordinance, your subdivision ordinance, and your master thoroughfare plan and all your, all your regulations that you require. Your, your E T J do not have to comply with the zoning ordinance. They're not zoned. They're not part of the city, so they're not zoned, so. You just throw out the zoning ordinance when you're talking about anything in the E T J, anything that touches that gray range that is not in the city limit. It is subdivision ordinance and, uh, let me get it. And, and, and your master thoroughfare plan. So that, that's it. And if they're in the county, they only, they're only required to comply with county subdivision regulations and once the county gets there, the county master thoroughfare plan. So we have a lot of, there's about three balls in the air. Anytime a development comes in, trying to locate them on that map and figure out how, how we're going to address them and set up the requirements for them.
And just a quick comment, there's actually E T J in both Grayson and Collin County. So we've seen subdivision maps that go to Collin County as well as Grayson.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, well, and then, yeah, and then, yeah, the county, and the other county requirements, if there, there's very little, uh, Collin County property that is in county, not in the E T J just because of where the location, but those are, that would be Collin County requirements too, so. We, yeah, we have to address whoever, and, and the question comes up, well, if we're only partially in the E T J and partially in the county, who governs? And I say, you've got one square inch in, in the city E T J, you're complying with the city of Van Alstine's requirements, unless I hear otherwise.
Do they say the same?
Huh?
Do they say, just Collin County say the same?
No, well, and I, no, they don't, uh, Collin County and Grayson, for example, the difference is because they're, they're under your subdivision, they're required to do concrete streets and sub, underground drainage. So they've got to come up to that standard. If they're in the county, they can use, uh, two, two-course asphalt and varden. And it's a narrow road. So it becomes, you know. They're, they're, yeah, the expense, you know, it's about twice the expense to be in the E T J or in the city, but you're getting that higher quality development to go forward. Okay.
Lynn, may I interrupt right there, please? Um, so the streets are the portion of the subdivision ordinance that's, that's not the E T J. What about the parking lot requirement? Does that not fall into play there?
Parking lots, same way, if they're in, if they're in the E T J, they, they come under the subdivision ordinance, which requires concrete parking. Yeah. That, that, that becomes kind of the, so, yeah, on the slideshow behind you, uh, city directives. Zoning ordinance provides the guidelines, subdivision ordinance provides the details on how to build it. And the other ordinances that you've added, your sign ordinance, your right-of-way ordinance and others, help govern how we control construction on how that goes forward. Uh, next slide, please. Like I said, the city's master plan, we have a land use plan, we have a thoroughfare plan, we have the master zoning ordinance, and we have the subdivision ordinance, which governs everything more on how we're doing that. Here's the yellow map with, you know, with all the proposed, this is the seventy square miles at full buildout. Uh, just for, for comparison's sakes, uh, a city that straddles the county to the south of us and the county south of that is seventy-four square miles and has about the same footprint. It's also known as Plano. So this is kind of, when this was done, this is a Plano-esque type development. You've got a lot of, a lot of residential spreading out with the core down your seventy-five and your major highways and with the retail on there. But that, that's your current one. Next, please. The next is the city's current ma, current master thoroughfare plan that correlates to that land use plan. And it governs the request for right-of-way on properties that come in with, uh, in the E T J or the city limits. I can request that the county do the same thing right now, but they don't have the obligation to respect this current, uh, master thoroughfare plan. The good thing is, is Grayson County is currently doing the master thoroughfare plan for all of Grayson County, which will include Van Alstine. So we'll get, and it'll be an iterative process. They're going through the engineering and traffic count portion of it right now. But we'll get a couple swings at this and it'll be before both bodies to recommend approval on the thoroughfare plan. As it comes out of Grayson County, that'll close that loophole on roadway whiffs and right-of-way whiffs with things that remain in the donut hole until the donut hole centers up.
Okay, Lynn?
Yes, ma'am.
On the thoroughfare, are, are you also, or can you share with us the, what's it, the municipal? It said, the, yeah, municipal thoroughfare, you know, they, they've got things in there that talk about the growth of the county too, which is how they're planning. Because obviously, since we're the bottom part of the county, they've got things out there that tell us about how they project the population growth to.
Right, that, that's the mun, the municipal planning organization, the Sherman, the M B O. Uh, yeah, we're in, they meet quarterly right now. Uh, they, they have all of the county, now all of the county, uh, Grayson County is in the M B O. So they are looking at, uh, and working with Techstock on getting funding mainly for seventy-five, one-twenty-one and five and, you know, they're, they're working on Techstock level roads right now to get funding and do that, and, and they're apportioning it as so.
Yeah, but part of what they're doing, they've also got population growth maps.
Right.
I think it would be really helpful for us to see what they use and what that population growth looks like.
Right, and, and that's gonna come out of the master thoroughfare study. That's the, that's the input and the engineering part that I was talking about. They're using the population growths and the traffic counts and all the statistical things that create a master thoroughfare plan in the background.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, so that's, that's what, that's what that's for. Uh, next, ma'am, please, ma'am. Uh, again, I just covered this earlier, uh, the sixty-six ordinance for the seventy square miles and how the, uh, and the state law and E T Js, just so you know. The donut hole, that, the outer circle of that donut hole is one mile wide, is a half mile on either side of the line. When Van Alstine reaches a population of five thousand, that donut doubles its size. So it becomes one mile. So we close off half of those donut holes with a mile from each, you know, be a mile on either side of. on either side of the current city limit. That's one of the things that go on.
Before you, does that, but it only happens with the gray. So where we cross on that, on the plan right here, this is the gray, our, let it be donut hole. So from the red line, as soon as we reach five thousand, it kicks out a mile on both sides instead of a half-mile.
Correct.
Except down on the south side, where it just goes a mile into the donut, it will not go a mile south because that's Anna's ETJ and, uh, okay.
Yeah, and the northern part along seventy-five, Howe has claimed that part too. So, yeah, the Anna city limit and the Van Alstine city limit has been set. There is no ETJ into Anna, and Anna has no ETJ in, so that, that one mile has been eliminated.
Okay, so that, okay, so that was going to be my second question. So if Anna or Howe grows faster than we do, they, the only place that they will intrude on our ETJ is outside the line where they may run.
Right, yeah. And nobody can come inside that red line. They can only come in outside, and whoever develops that section first can request annexation from those property owners to come into Van Alstine, or Weston, or Gunner, or White Right, you know, depending on where they are, wherever their adjacency is. So it's kind of a race to that. The red line, the sixty-six ordinance, the red line, is set, yeah, that's set. Nobody can come inside that, matter of fact, that's been, that's been the court.
But it's a race to get, to see who can get the most ETJ outside of that line.
Right. That is correct.
Mr. Menon, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, just clarifying, I think this map needs to be updated because it doesn't reflect the lawsuit that was settled. And how, what came to be is Anna tried to encroach on our line, and so the city, Van Alstine sued all of, you know, said, here is our city limits. We're notifying everybody, this is our city limits, and they sued everybody. Anna, I mean, Anna Howe and Gunner, to my knowledge, were all parties to the agreement that would freeze whereby eliminating some of the ETJ in the west and some more of the ETJ on the north. The two black areas that you see, one to east and one west, in the corners of the ETJ settlements with the city van, were corners that were in dispute. Anna also passed a two-foot ordinance. They're the only other community to do that that surrounds us. Anna passed that ordinance, and their ordinance and our ordinance went pretty much along the same line, along red line, that orders the two cities, but those two black corners were in dispute. And so as part of the suit settlement, Anna got the eastern black area, and Van Alstine got the western. And so, but I think some of the western ETJ with Gunner and some of the northern ETJ with Anna needs to be recognized per the settlement, Sue, White Right, Tom Bean, that they weren't part of that, to my knowledge, and so those ETJs exist.
So anyway, it is a race for development on things that haven't been settled yet. So just so you know that it's out there, you know, if this truly ends up, if the seventy square miles develops like it did south, you know, we're about forty to forty-five years behind Plano's current pace. And Plano's size forty, forty-five years ago is comparable to where Van Alstine is right now.
Okay, Lynn, can you tell me why you said Weston?
Weston's got a little portion that butts up on the very southwest corner of that ETJ.
Really?
Yeah. Is that the yellow line? I'm not familiar, I don't have the current, this map was something that was provided back in oh-eight, right, I think, Bill? So it has.
They used it as part of that litigation. But it's also, and the map just needs to be redrawn, I believe, to be quick, but so...
So anyway, but that's kind of, when we're talking ETJ and how we, how we're going to develop that, just keep this in mind as from a long-range plan, what the decisions you make in the next couple of years are going to affect how we get there and make sure that we've got the quality development that we want in Van Alstine. Okay, we talked about donut hole, next slide, yes?
Is there any impact for being in two counties too?
Uh, a little bit. I worked for Richardson, which was also in two counties, and it made it kind of interesting when we were trying to get bond proposals approved for Collin and Dallas County. We obviously had some issues. So, I mean, funding for roadways and things like that, it becomes a little tricky as you go forward. And then, you know, as you get bigger projects and you're asking for public money, for instance, the Collin County people couldn't vote on a bond election in Richardson for the Dallas County portion, and vice versa. So it becomes kind of an interesting dichotomy on who's voting for what and why. Uh, the next slide, please. Uh, here's the, here's the map. Like I said, on this map here, the gray is the current city limit. I, we did just update this map a little bit. Last week, we added the Thompson track, which was annexed in two thousand and six, I believe, and the other track, which was annexed a couple of years ago, and the Remington Ridge property down off the county line road. So the current, the previous maps you've seen of it don't reflect those recent annexations. I also included the Braywood annexation, which just happened a couple of months ago. So those, you kind of, we're kind of building that footprint and spreading out, but, you know, we still have, that is approximately four square miles of seventy. So we've got a long way to go. Next. And here, here's the gray, here's the donut hole exhibit that was appointed on that wall. Obviously, we've got some updating to do with that, and we need to work on that, but that, the area, the area that is unshaded in the middle is the county property that is going to fall under future Van Alstine purview, but isn't currently there. So how we handle that and how we work with the county, and just so you know, I have a weekly, daily event on what's coming on with the county engineer, so we, for example, the Chapel Creek subdivision that you approved last month had about a third of it in the ETJ and about two-thirds out. So they fall under city purview for concrete streets, but they came and got the revision for a smaller street section with open ditch drainage. So they're going to build it to that standard, but I have a, there's going to be a resolution that comes back to you to send the maintenance of that road to Grayson County, because it's in Grayson County maintenance. So it's, we're still working out the half-in, half-out stuff, so it's a work in progress. Next. Uh, again, this is, this is kind of what I summed up early. Properties within the city limit must comply with your zoning ordinance, your subdivision ordinance, and your master plans. In the ETJ, they have to comply with your subdivision ordinance and your master plans. They don't have to listen to anything you have to say about zoning. And then the donut hole is county development ordinances and any county master plan. The other thing, yeah, okay, I'll see you there. And then, this is part of Mr. Pacheco's request today, the infill and redevelopment, you know, we had a couple of things coming in. Properties within the current city limit have to comply with all three ordinances, the master plans, zoning, and the subdivision. And that, now, subdivision, that includes the concrete parking and everything like that, and how we get variances. So we, how we do that and how you set up that, you know, if it's coming through for variance and all that, and you're a PD, then that's what we need to keep doing, but you're going to see a lot more of that as we go forward. And then to comply with the current city limits, city ordinances, they have to receive a variance, they have to show hardship, or they have to redefine lanes, which is the PD zoning or something else that gives them that special provision to do that. Next, please. New developments will be, yes, ma'am?
Can you say that last part, man?
Uh, if the land, can you go back to the slide, I was going to read it, sorry. Yeah, they need to redefine the land use, either redefine the zoning or the stipulations in the zoning, which, you know, over the last year or so, maybe two years, we've had a lot more PD zonings, because like the one tonight on Sanford Park, they're staying with the base SF1 zoning, but they have a couple revisions to a few lots. And, and most of them are reducing the side yards from ten, you know, ten foot's required to five yards, or to five feet. Ten foot to five foot. And so all this, and all the development that's in the historic area, when they come in, they have to comply with those setbacks also, unless they come for a variance, or get a rezoning, or do something to get approval to do what they're trying to do. And we're seeing a lot more of that coming in, so I just want to make you aware that we're seeing, you know, that kind of issue coming up.
And what do they have to show to be able to ask for it?
Well, they have to receive, they have to convince the, the PTZ will make the recommendation, and the council will make the final determination, but they have to show that they, there's a hardship to the request that going with the new ordinance or the current standards creates a hardship that is non-economical. You know, money is not supposed to play a part in what a hardship is. If a building is physically closer to a property line, like Mr. Pacheco's front yard setback right now, it encroaches, it was an existing building, that's, I mean, you'd have to have him take off the front part of this building and redo his entrance to do that, that would be hardship. Because they don't want to do it, because it would cost them more, that's an economic hardship that is, should, I forget how Julie says it, but it's, it's not a consideration for the granting of variance.
And I bring that up because I think we forget that frequently, and the more development we get, we cannot, we cannot continue to do that up.
Yeah, I mean, if there's physical barriers or creeks or floodplains or something that are creating a hardship, that's one thing, but just because they want to make a smaller street or an asphalt street instead of a concrete street because of the price, that's, you know, that, that should, that's recommended not to be considered. I forget Julie's exact wording on that, but economic hardship is not a hardship in development.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, please. And I just brought this one up, the zoning ordinance, obviously, we're getting a lot of issues and PD requests and variance requests on lot size, setbacks, building materials, and then there's been a few other miscellaneous things that we need to do. So that, okay, and so my question at the back of this is, do we need to look at the zoning ordinance and change the criteria that we seem to be going to, or do we continue to keep them coming forward for variances? Just kind of keep that in mind. The subdivision ordinance handles the platting procedures and how to design and build all the infrastructure. And again, your subdivision ordinance, as adopted a couple of years ago, is concrete streets, underground drainage. We also have provisions in there for how to do, how and where to put water sewer lines, and also the required landscaping along the perimeters, the screening, and lighting for commercial, how they light the parking lot in their buildings. So that's already in there, and it's been recently approved. Next, please. Adjacent city infrastructure. Water and sewer is, has to be installed according to our current master plans. And when we adopted the impact fees in twenty-fif, twenty-fourteen, we adopted the master water and sewer plan, which are up on the far wall over there, and I've got maps in your, so you can see them closer. But basically, what we're doing with the water system is creating the loops that help serve and feed the interior, and with the water development board loan that we did down county line road or not cartwright, we kind of created the southern loop. And if you look at the map, we've got a northern loop that goes up to Redden Road, north of the high school, and out to seventy-five and back around, also goes out east and goes out west to, right now, the Thompson property. So, you know, out towards, past Eagle Point Road. So we are creating the loops that will serve the city for water in perpetuity, as long as Steve doesn't break the wells. But, but we're planning on doing it. And then, and, yeah, and we have set up the standards for what the materials and the location of where they're going to be, and then it's paid for through, developer pays for the initial installs, but we also give the impact fees, proratas, and development agreements, kind of create the funding mechanisms for how we do this. And what we've been doing, for example, out on FM one-twenty-one, right across from the college is where the well site five is, that is the extent of the current water line that Steve has and circles back towards the rest of town. If the Thompson track develops out on the other side of Jim Jones Road, all the way down to the creek past Eagle Point on the north side, they have approximately two million dollars worth of infrastructure to get water and sewer down to that property and serve it. It is currently in the city limit. What we've been doing, and the agreement from the city manager is to, as part of the development agreement, is to supplement each one of the four hundred lots that would come in on that development would pay thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred dollars in impact fees to pay for a line that's on our impact fee map. So what we've been doing is, is if you build it, your lots don't have impact fees. We did a similar thing, George, when the last Horton thing came in, Stonehenge had to develop the lift station and the sewer line. There was going to be a seventy thousand dollar prorata. They had fifty-five lots, which would be fifty-five thousand dollars in sewer revenue to the impact fees. They agreed to pay the seventy-six thousand in prorata in lieu of, so it just gives us a little negotiating room to help the developer get out there and make that pay. So I just want to make you aware that those kind of, those kind of things are going on, and it's for the same purpose of building the same line, it's just the city doesn't get to be the middleman in that one. They have to pay for it upfront and then get reimbursed by the developer later, the developer paying for it upfront. So just, just something to think about when that happens.
So impact fees are basically a negotiating tool you use when you're bringing in development.
Right. If we can, if we can offset impact fees for the hard infrastructure upfront, it's been something that we've been doing over the last few years.
And then are there various buckets of money when it comes to impact fees? Do we have different types of impact fees, and are there ones for infrastructure, water sewers, or separate ones for roadway?
Well, yeah, there would be, except that impact fees for streets, according to state law, are only allowed within the city limit. So that four square miles of that little bitty gray central area is the only place we could collect impact fees for. So right now, you're, once we get to seventy square miles, impact fees for roadways will probably be enforced. enforced. Right now, it doesn't, there's, the only roadways that would show up on the impact fee list that are in the city limit currently are Techside Roads, 121 and 5 and 75. So, we do not have, we haven't pursued the trouble of going through a street impact fee yet because there's no streets that, you know, even Kelly Road, which is half in, half out, it isn't really viable to get an impact fee for. But what we are doing with Horton and Stone Hollow and everybody who builds along Kelly Road is we are getting their escrow funds to have the money in so that we can pay for their half of the roadway when it comes in. So we are, we are leveraging that. And that money's in an account. We do water, I don't know if Gemma separates water and sewer impact fees, I think it goes into one impact fee fund, but the secret to impact fees are if it's not on that capital projects list, the impact fee money can't be spent on it. So if you hear, if the council hears us, we're going to use impact fees for that, your first cross check is, is it on that list? Is it on that map? So, and that's really what's for. Just so you know, impact fees are good for five years, so in 2019, we're going to have to readdress that and talk about the next, the next generation of impact fees. Steve's going to, we're going to need an elevated storage tank probably out across from the college, and maybe a sewer plant, you know, there's things that Steve's going to need as development curves, so you'll get a new, new project, capital projects list on water and sewer in the next 18 months or so. Streets and drainage have to comply with the master thoroughfare plan, have to stay on the, or the current standard, which is all concrete, and, and according to escrows or development agreements. And again, down bottom line, Jim, there's no impact fees because it's only allowed in the current city limit. Next slide, please. This is the water CCN map. CCN stands for Certificate of Convenience and Necessity. It's basically a city limit, it's a city limit map for water organizations, meaning that your city, your city limit for water may not be the same as your city limit for the actual city limit. Obviously, we have South Grayson on the south, and east side and north side a little bit, and then Merrill Lee's out to the west. They, they have first right to provide water unless they're, unless you annex the property and bring it in, then it's automatically in the city CCN, or they request service from the city. Then, then, but you know, you've got to get water out too then. So that's kind of linking it back to the capital, capital improvement program for water and sewer, is we're trying to balance the future and not get too far out ahead of the curve because you have competing entities that serve water and sewer. Nobody really serves sewer in the area because they're all one seven, they can one eight block, and Steve's got the only sewer CCN in the area, so that's why we're doing that. Next, ma'am. Here's that water master plan I was talking about, you can see the outer loops, the one down County Line Road and Cartwright has been approved, or been installed and is actually operational. We've got one up Jim Jones Road, out to the west end of the Thompson track, and then up and around Redden Road. It's kind of a filled loop, and then the next, next generation of this map for impact fees will be the next layer as we go out, just think of it expanding out as we go. Next, ma'am. And then here's the sewer map, same, same thing, we've got a couple lift stations down Hurricane Creek and the creek to the east off of the, what used to be Driscoll Hill subdivision, and just working to get sewer back to the current treatment, the current treatment plant, how are we going to do that? That'll be, yeah, any, any new location for a new treatment plant Steve just asked is up for debate in the next CIP update. So, right now, it's not on the plan, so we don't know where it might be, or where it needs to be, but we have an idea, and that will have to come back to this board and get approved. Yeah, given, given that. Talk about the big projects, Steve just reminded me that, you know, he's operating about 33, 33% average daily flow of the current capacity of the plant. Once you get to 50%, you've got to be planning for the next phase, and when you're at 70%, you've got to be at the next step. So, if you're at 33% right now, once the town doubles in size, right now we're about 4,000 people, we're going to have to be under construction for the next one for the sewer plant. The water tank, you have 2200, 22, 220,000 gallons elevated in the tank across the street. That's good, as TCQ requirements are 100 gallons per connection. Right now, you're at about 14, 1500 connections, so we've got about 700 connections, the next 700 connections, doesn't matter if they're a three-quarter inch, or a two-inch, or a five-inch, or eight-inch, it's one per connection, we will require another elevated tank. So that's why I anticipate in the next go-around, we're going to see the next one. So we've got about 700 to go before we're, or 500 to go before, in that range, before we're going to be required to have another elevated tank.
Did that include the 111 we approved tonight?
No, well...
Thank you, you just gave, was that 500, is that a 111 tonight?
Well, the 100, no, that, that doesn't include, yeah, it's current, it's most, it's current tax right now. So, the 111 we did, 111 we did for Sanford Park, and then the History Maker, 220's coming in, and once, once Stone Hollow does their other 50, and if we get all these others coming in, they're talking about coming in, we need to be ready.
So, roughly, roughly 500, yeah, okay, so, yeah, let's think of this real quick. So roughly 500 connections left before we have to have another elevated tank?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, given a multifamily project like Legum, is that one, is that considered one connection?
I think they had like seven total connections, so they're, they're only seven. They only count seven.
But that counts. Homeowners, that counts, businesses, anything that's tied into public water.
Right.
So any meter, any new meter.
Any new meter. So we...
We will start next in 2018. We will start, it takes almost a year, two years to get a water board development loan.
Right.
So we'll start the process in 2018 for the elevated tank.
Do, does this, do we, I mean, I'll just add, the city has, you know, where you want?
We're going to put it at Wildfire.
Okay.
Which is our further west.
No, I got you.
There's, there's a couple acres on the southwest corner of that site that will be in, it won't disturb the well, and it doesn't bother where the pump house is, and it's available to do that.
When you get over to the west, our pressure drops, it starts to show, so that's our next zone that we're going to have to start putting more pressure to.
So new water tank in Van Alstee next year?
No, it probably takes a year to build it, design and build it, so we'll be about three years, but...
We'll go, we'll start paperwork in 18. It took us 15 months last time to get approved on the last water development loan, so we're probably looking at maybe two and a half years.
So, based, based on that, and TDs we are hitting, we're going to be behind, or do we stop development for two years because of that?
Um, no.
I mean, we're this close...
Unless this council tells us to stop, we are all in for all development, we're going to be ready for it. We're planning, we're, we're planning for it three years out right now, and looking, the, these, these master plans for the water and sewer are for the five-year impact fee, but they're a 10-year lookout based on population growth and things like that.
So, I got that, but he said a year and a half just to get the paperwork, and then another year to build it, so that's two and a half. We're already only 500 left?
Well, and, and it's not that you run out of water when that happens, TCQ just requires you to be in the process of upsizing yours, you know, so we, we're, we're already two and a half years ahead of that curve, which is going to, you know, we have to put the...
You don't have to have it, just have it in plenty.
Well, yeah, at certain points, well, yeah, once we get to 70% on the sewer plant, for example, we have to be in design, at 90%, we've got to be under construction, or, so, I mean...
And we're going, when we go for the development loan, it'll be for the sewer plant and the elevated tank.
Okay. Next slide, please. This is a slide, I've got yellow boxes all over, just kind of showing you where we're getting hit on the fringes of ETJ all around. Chapel Creek's on there, there's a development that they've been talking about on Redden Road. Longwall Mechanical has got a site approved out on Spence Road adjacent to the new Frankland. Let's see, who else is out there? Oh, there's 92 acres adjacent to the Thompson track that is talking about doing 37 or 38 single-family lots, one acre. The Washington Estates down on 222 and 3356, Long Hill's a lone star. You can just kind of see, we're, we're being inundated around the donut hole, or on the edges of the donut, and plus what you've seen with History Maker and Sanford Park and Stone Hollow, you know, Driscoll Hill's still out there, the Thompson track's still out there. And then, you know, we just annexed a couple years ago the Udder Track, you know, all the, all the, all the properties that are in moving are out there, just kind of keeping in mind that it's, it's not, it's not if it's coming, it's when it's coming, and we're trying to stay ahead of that for you. So, next slide, please. Again, we've got limited service and compliance area. Again, the city limits, the four square miles are where you have control on what you want to do. You, you've got zoning, you've got subdivision, you've got master plans, you've got infrastructure plans, you can do, make care of that. The ETJ and the donut hole, which is calculated about 36, the donut hole's about 36 square miles, and ETJ's the other 34, so about 30 miles of ETJ that you have to take care of, has that limited subdivision ordinance requirement, and the infrastructure is dependent on who's providing the service. Because Merrill Lee and South Grayson don't necessarily require fire protection, fire flows on their subdivisions. Meaning that all the water systems that we do here and all the new subdivisions have 1,500 gallons per minute for fire service to do that. Out in Merrill Lee and out in South Grayson, they, they just serve the, the consumption, they're not necessarily serving fire protection. Some, some lines they do, but not all of them. So it's kind of a hodgepodge out once you get outside the, the city system. And then, the streets and drainage are going to be, anything not in the city limit is going to be under county compliant, you know, county's going to take over maintenance on it, whether it's Collin County or Grayson County, that, you know, they just got to comply with that requirement. Next, please. So, and then the donut hole is no zoning, no subdivision, county subdivision regulations, and the infrastructure is being provided. And again, both county requirements are for 20-foot, 24-foot asphalt road with open ditch drainage, that's both of their requirements. So if we, if we don't get our say-so, or they don't touch the ETJ or the city limit, we have no say-so in what those roads develop. Now, if a county develops a roadway that ends up on the master thoroughfare plan, that ends up being a six-lane divided thoroughfare, you're going to have in the future, it's just, oh, you're going to have a single-family residential on a six-lane divided thoroughfare. Need to think about that for a minute. You know, you're having, you've got single-family on, pick a, on Spring Creek Parkway, they got the little front roads, but on Parker Road, or Park Avenue, or 15th Street in Plano, having all that, and basically you're going to get a bigger version of, Mochey Bird Lane is another one that the house is spaced onto the smatic major thoroughfare that goes through. So, getting the donut hole closed, getting it ready to go is really going to be important in the future as we go forward. And then, next, please. And so, here, here's what's going on right now to help close a lot of these loopholes and things that are going on, and I just want to make sure that you're all aware of them. As I mentioned, Grayson County's doing their master thoroughfare plan. In March, April, they're supposed to be coming back with preliminary recommendations and then have it before commissioners court sometime in the summer. So we will have our couple swings at it upcoming, and we need to talk about anything that is roadway-dependent and, you know, making sure that it complies with our master planning that we want to do. We have the Gateway Planning Effort, right now, their task is to, and when we talked to Gateway, the ultimate goal was to redo the big yellow map, but because the city doesn't have control over, it only has control over four square miles of 70, we really can't do much in the yellow map area, so we can start in CBD and the industrial park and work out, and that, that was, that's the initial goal of the Gateway Planning. Right now, the next, the next phase of that would be to update the master land use plan as we get bigger, and then it would be to, and then if necessary, update the master zoning ordinance. And again, that's all contingent on the growth strategies and as we go forward. As I mentioned, the subdivision ordinance was updated in 2015, nothing going on with that. Is there an infill and redevelopment policy that the city wants to adopt? And Mr. Pacheco's had some issues, that Much Love Motors came in, they couldn't comply, they went away, Mr. Murphy's having problems with that Armer Tech, you know, they're, they're having to comply, and some of that is self-induced, some of that is, you know, he's bringing in unique users that don't have a definition in the zoning code. So we have to go through the process of setting up the definition and then doing the zoning code, so I mean, it, it becomes, but if there's a more direct redevelopment policy that needs to be a little easier to get through, we, we need you to set that up, so, or, or we need to start talking about it to figure out, so we don't chase away businesses that want to come, come to Van Alstee. And, and, and that's, you know, without compromising the quality that you adopted with the other stuff. So, you know, whether or not the parking lot is concrete at El patio or not, I mean, that's, you know, that, that's something that needs to be really discussed and talked about. And then any other things, any other opportunities that you see that help update the, to make development easier. And then, yeah, right.
So you're talking about that piece of it, kind of like it's more like if you're, if you're organizing these three points, like a phase one, phase two, and phase three, you're talking about that like it's more of a phase three, but we're seeing that as a pressing need, is there something?
Well, and these are, these are bullet points. The infill and redevelopment, as it continues to happen, and people keep, continue to ask for side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks, and concrete wave, you know, and masonry spring, that probably is number one on the list. You know, the, the other longer ways with bigger developers coming in, they're used to the rules of regulation, they've been developing in Frisco and Plano and McGinnie for years, Van Alstee's a little breath of fresh air for them.
Thank you.
I would hope, there's a few of them in the, there's a few of them in the audience here. I'm just going, I'm hoping that we're a little easier than that without compromising standards, you know, and that, that was always the point of what we've done so far. So, yeah, those aren't necessarily in order, those are just bullet points of items to discuss. Then the very last slide is kind of a checklist, what was comments? Well, the last page of your submittals is kind of a checklist, and I've checked the boxes on things that we've talked about, and, you know, the Grayson County, again, the again, the Grayson County Master Thoroughfare Plan, the Gateway Planning Efforts, the subdivision ordinance, you know, do we need to update, you know, when and do, yes, we do, but when do we need to update the land use plan? And do we need to update the master zoning ordinance? Uh, other things that are out there, we've handled lighting with the subdivision ordinance for commercial properties. You know, you have assigned ordinance, signed billboards right now, you wanna do that. Uh, you, you do have a thoroughfare designation in your zoning ordinance, which hasn't been adopted yet. You know, and part of the Gateway Planning thing is whether or not there's a historical one coming up, so, start thinking about where do you want to apply those. Obviously, thoroughfare's gonna be along seventy-five and one-twenty-one and five, but, you know, are there, what other criteria that might need to be there? And then, coming up with the policy on infill and redevelopment, the policy on utilities, because as Merrily and South Grayson grow, as soon as the city incorporates that, you're gonna be asked to purchase their system of what you incorporate. So, you're gonna have the out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket cost to bring that part of their system, if you wanna use it, into yours, or you're gonna duplicate. So, it becomes a financial, a heavy, high-end issue to do that. Uh, talk about streets and sidewalks downtown, whether or not we, we upgrade, you know, everything here is asphalt and bar ditch downtown, and, you know, when and if that policy gets passed, that you wanna go underground drainage and concrete streets, that's leaking, that's, you know, all the new, all the new subdivisions are going to do that, unless you grant the variance, but the historic part of town, what is the strategy, and at that point, who start paying, you know, think about fifteen, twenty, fifty years out, who's gonna pay for that? You know, it's gonna be a bond program, everybody else on the outer half is gonna be paying for the historic part, so, if that bond, and then talking about drainage too. And any other, I've got a couple blank spaces here for anything else that you might have. Any quick, comments, questions?
Man, I have one about the streets for the historic part. Is there grants available to help with that? No?
There, there are some, well, there's some grants, but, uh, they're, they're very competitive right now in the CD, uh, CBD, CBDU, CGBD, yeah. Uh, that, that is, but those are very competitive, um, and, you know, and it'll be a while, I mean, before we make a significant, I mean, it's a couple million dollars to just do sections of streets.
I would just say, it's an excellent and comprehensive overview, I appreciate all the work you put into the maps and the, and the slides as well. Being the zoning guy, I'm in favor of reviewing the zoning ordinance, it's been, as you pointed out, true, yeah, since the last update and even further, since it was actually originally redrafted. And there are a lot of things, as Brian mentioned, we see every developer that comes in is asking for something, some type of variance or in, in the PD. And I won't pretend I know the answers to what makes a quality development. I'm willing to trade a lot size for something that makes sense, but is that wider sidewalks, is that more trees, is that public space, open space? We could certainly use some input, it seems to me, on how, and maybe it's not the same answer for every neighborhood in town, but it'd be helpful to know when you look at a plan, this is gonna cause an issue or hey, that's a good thing, let's ask for, trade off some of those different areas.
And then I wanna thank, this is a great thing, thank you so much for, for getting this made up for us, and, uh, and, uh, Jim, I, we all, phone council, certainly appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
And we also appreciate any information that you can give us, so that we can avoid some of the pitfalls, the other plans that, uh, need to be...
There, there, yeah, there, there's a lot of good, good stories, but then there's a few...
We would like to learn from their experience, we don't necessarily want some of that first-hand, we want to learn.
Being a part of this town, we agree, because we both inherited those same things. Had our other jobs.
Thank you.
Well, my, my issue or something, we should consider, call the living, we just approved another hundred eleven homes. It's just a bunch of homes with streets. There's nothing for them to do, or there's no parks, there's no nothing.
Right, well...
And, and we've been pretty much doing that with a lot of the PDs we've put in, there's nothing for anybody to do but live there.
Right. Well, and just, just so you know, uh, we have just gotten requests back, or we've got a statement of qualification back for a master parks plan.
Speak up, man!
Yeah, that, that, the Parks Board will be taking it up at their next meeting. We have two seminals, two of the high, high-quality parks, we're gonna, we're starting that process to create a Parks Master Plan, and, you know, council approved that in budget, so we're, we're on our way to make it, get, get ready to prepare for that growth, and, you know, we've got utilities, we, we, Grayson County's working on streets, recreation and parks, cities taking that on, so we're, we're putting a piece together to make it happen.
Hey, Len, are there things that you would be able to tell us to that, you know, homeowners, businesses, whatever, I mean, is there some hot topic that buyers are looking for that, you know, that maybe we should take into consider when developing, uh, that people like seeing these particular types of things? I mean, I have no idea what might be an example, and I'm not gonna say bike path, but...
A shared use path.
Is there something like that that's attractive to people right now, or things they really don't like? I mean, we, we are marketing for people to come out and de- develop, so what are they buying, what do they want?
Well, and that, that, that's part of the reason I asked for this, is, uh, a lot of the developers, I mean, I'm used to sixty, seventy, and eighty-foot lots, but the current home market is forty, fifty, and sixty, and forty with five yard setbacks. And the only zoning application we have here for forty is a zero lot line. So, that's why I wanted to open that up for you, and most, a lot of builders are coming in, and their, their product is a forty-foot, forty-foot lot, and they've got a quali, you know, they've got a two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar product that goes on it. It's just a narrow lot with, you know, all the amenities, so that, that's the trend I'm seeing, and everybody coming in and asking for, you know, deviations or variances to whatever their current zoning is. Um, and, you know, that's it, uh, you know, the masonry requirement and whatever percentage that might be has, you know, has some aesthetic to it, whether or not that goes up or down, you know, right now, most of your zoning ordinances or zoning classifications have sixty percent masonry on them, so, except the old ones. SF one and SF two is still zero, because it was part of Old Town, but, you know, your SF sixties, uh, seventy-twos, and, you know, more...
Is that developers asking for this, or are buyers not wanting to mow their yard, or they just can't afford the price?
I don't know, I've got a couple developers in here. Do you guys have any input on what, why, what the lot size, or? I mean, I, I, I don't know, I, that is the market, if what it is right now, what's coming to us, I don't, you know, it's what it is, I don't know.
It has, you know, it has to do, it's about, for the city. Suzanne, can you hear me?
Just, sometimes, yes, Bill.
Okay. But, you know, the, the way that I think that it exists out there is the developers are looking for, a couple things are in play right now, is a lot of the developers, home builders, are trying to do what's called balance their portfolio. Uh, some of the home builders that have been in the higher-end markets, publicly trading companies, and they're looking to markets that they can, uh, that, that they can sell a less expensive home to balance their portfolio, uh, that looks better, and that's what their, uh, corporate parents are asking them to do. It's not all bad, you know, that's an affordable house, but what Van Alstine, I believe, has to be careful of is that in, in those developments, that the quality of, the quality of the subdivisions are maintained, and that we don't sacrifice those in order to get those developments. Development's gonna happen in Van Alstine no matter what, if we're in the way, and so, it's our challenge to be a community that wants to foster and wants to be a good partner to good developers. But it's also, I believe, the city's responsibilities to protect the future of the community, that those developers who are coming in here, whose sole goal is economics, and they come in, they develop, and they're gone, they don't live here, they aren't left for what they live, is that we need to make sure that we are thoughtful, certainly to be not, uh, ridiculous in our requirements, but at the same time, that we hold them to a standard that, once the communities develop the quality of life, those things that people moving into the community look for, number one is schools, without question. I mean, it is the leader and the reason that Van Alstine has been blessed with the developments that are looking to our community is our schools, our quality of life and parks. Uh, the, the new group that are homebuyers are looking for those, uh, opportunities for, uh, outdoor activities, not, you know, where neighborhoods become community, become family, uh, a lot of connectivity, they're looking for quality, I will give compliments to, uh, Stone Hollow, you notice they're building a hundred percent brick homes, quality of those homes are beautiful, their aesthetics are great, uh, I think they've done an outstanding job, and I would hold them out, another developer, another home builder, and say, this, these are the kind of homes that we're looking for. So, I would say that I, you know, it's been my opinion that we don't know what we don't know, and that development in Van Alstine is new for all of us, for everybody, and that I think the city, the P and Z, needs to find a partner who is savvy, who understands what our goals and hopes are for the future, and that, that the city would then employ them, partner with them, to review plans, to help the P and Z, to help the council, because I will promise you, the developers that come to the community are extremely experienced, some are very thoughtful, others, it's just the buck. And they're very difficult, because they make a lot of promises, and we're not gonna really know whether we made any mistakes until it's all, all over, all finished. So, I just, I would encourage the city to, to find a partner of development group that could come in and assist as we grow through this. One day, we'll have a planning department, and we'll have the ability to hire a professional, and that, today, we don't have that. And so, it's left, uh, to the members of the council and the P and Z to make those decisions, and, uh, I just think it would be very helpful to have somebody who, their sole focus is Van Alstine, their sole focus is quality development.
Thank you, Bill, that helps tons. And honestly, is there a reference or something, because it almost sounds like we wanna have an idea of what our own balanced portfolio looks like? I mean, so much of portable housing, so much higher end, so much park space, you know, to, to, to stay balanced.
And a variety of the time for development and homes.
Yeah, Suzanne and, and remember, and this, this is Bob Johnson, and I wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Suzanne just said, that my experience personally is I watched Mesquite grow from a relatively small community to what's now a very large community, relatively small, and they're one-fifty thousand people. And I think Mesquite made a huge mistake. And the huge mistake they made was not having a balanced portfolio, as Miss Sandra just indicated. They, they built all the homes the same. Well, that's great, but it's affordable, and, and the neighborhoods are quality neighborhoods, it's okay, but what the mistake they made was, if you lived in Mesquite and you wanted to move up in scale to another home, it wasn't available. And so, I think that's a good point, to give a balanced portfolio, and try to make sure that you're not gonna let every developer come in and build the same product. You need a, a variety, so that people can choose where they wanna live, and maybe they wanna stay in Van Alstine, but they want a nicer home, or maybe they want a smaller home, or, you know, they wanna downsize, or whatever. So, that, that, I think, is the key, as far as what's a good idea for how to plan for the future, is just make sure you have that balance, and then, of course, amenities always make a difference. Quality of life, uh, those amenities are critical.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to, oh, I wanted to make one other suggestion, too. I mean, I, I think as our governmental boards and such, that we really should have some sort of communication vehicle between P and Z, council, EDC, CDC, to know what activity is going on, what stage, you know, are there business, businesses that are having conversations with us and wanting to come in and focusing in a certain place? Are there, you know, developers coming in, because honestly, I have no earthly idea about any of this until it shows up, you know, in the Friday packet of who we're gonna look at it. So, I, I have a sense that our communication amongst ourselves is not very good, and I think that ends up falling back on the folks that are coming before us, because we're not coordinated and we're not prepared. I, I don't know what the vehicle is, I don't know how we communicate, but I sure would like something monthly that said, you know, here's what we're looking at, here's what's coming down the pike, and I think it would make us a lot more attentive to folks.
Well, and I, I can address some of that. I mean, we have developers coming in quite often, but they wanna remain confidential, because they're negotiating land at various places, so, you know, they're coming in with the idea of confidentiality, so that they can still make the best deal for what, whatever they're trying to do, so I, you know, it, it's a...
I can't believe there's not some way to help us, and you don't have to give us the confidentiality, the confidential information. I mean, something at some point, we should be able to know, Len, I can't believe there's not some way to prepare us.
Right, okay, uh, yeah. Well, but they, they normally don't want us to talk about the piece of property they're talking about, or what, yeah.
I can see that they don't want to know what they're interested in or who they are.
Right, right, well, they don't, they wanna come in and find out what the requirements are, what kind of, you know, what kind of density they get, what kind of requirements and qualities are gonna be required, so I can give them all that, but they don't wanna, you know, and a lot of times, I don't know the property they're talking about, it's just, kinda a search for a layoff, yeah.
I just think if somebody wants to come in and start talking to us about forty to sixty-foot lot lines, it would be good to know that we have somebody coming in and they are gonna put in this type of, you know, product, and these are the things we'll be looking at. I mean, that, that's a start. I don't have to know where, and I don't have to know who they are.
Yeah, and, I mean, there's a term for that, it's a pre-development conference, and certainly P and Z is open to that idea, so anytime they wanna come in and say, hey, your ordinance says X, and we're kinda, I'd like to talk to you about half X, okay, let's talk, you know, we're open to that discussion long before they spend all their money on plans and, and zoning requests.
And we do that, yes.
Yeah, we, we have done that from time to time, we're, we'll just give them some feedback, if you will, on what their plans are. And, yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't suggest that we need to disclose every conversation on day one, but as time goes on, I believe there's a trip point where we, as Suzanne said, sometime before it shows up on the agenda, we kinda know what other people in town know about what's happening.
Sometimes, Suzanne, uh, it'd be four or five, people we've involved, involved in looking at the same piece of property, so they don't want other people to even know. And, I mean, just, there, sometimes he gets an email, sometimes I get an email, I forward it to him, he usually handles what they're asking for, uh, because he knows, he has maps showing the new updates and everything. So, most of the time, I don't know about it until we're in the planning stage. So, I mean, it's, it's just the way they like to work, that's always been that way.
Anything else? Anything else?
So, with the last little conversation there, more along the lines of, you know, you got all those little yellow squares on that map? Can you talk about what those all are? Is it, you know, I think what you're asking for is to be current up on what those little squares are out there? Is that what you're talking about, Suzanne? Because I kind of agree with that, too. It'd be nice to have a map with, okay, this one's coming, this one's coming, this one's coming. Those are concrete.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea, because honestly, I mean, is it going to come from the west, the south? Where is this stuff coming from?
I mean, you had it out there, it just wasn't labeled. It just had yellow squares on it. If it was labeled, it'd be kind of handy.
Yeah, well, and based on that confidentiality of, you know, these are ones that you've seen, you've seen what their flats on the...
If there's a hole in the ground going up north of me in my house, it's that, well, down, Longwood mechanic, it's Longwood mechanic.
Yeah.
Well, just, that would be the kind of thing I'd like, and all those around in the city. I think that would be kind of handy to have, just a map with stuff that's, we know for sure, or at least as sure as we can, and it's more than junk.
There's something that's very good proof there.
Well, and, yeah.
So, I...
Is the confidentiality part of it, I might have to just kind of anonymously, you were talking 400 lots?
Yep. Okay, yeah.
Somewhere.
Wouldn't want to violate any of those competences, but whatever you can tell us, when you can tell us that they don't want to make sure.
So, what I hope I'm hearing is this thing is wrapping up, and the last thing that happens when things wrap up, that I like to see anyway, are action items. I heard some things tonight. The idea of a partner in development sounds like a neat thing. Is there such a thing out there, and is anybody going to take responsible for finding that?
Well, that's part of the Gateway. I mean, I think we've got Gateway Planning involved with that. They are one of the leaders in doing Old Town developments and doing master planning. I mean, they're currently under contract, under a slightly different scope, but, you know, if we want to reach out to them and add...
Does that sound like what you're talking about?
Yeah. Gateway actually came recommended from somebody that I think has done a good job in the community, but I would get them, I would, to me, I would call them in and say, okay, here is our goal. You know, we want to balance our portfolio, we want to be a community, that's a model community that people would point to in the future and say, wow, they really did it right. And you give them your desires, and then you lean on their expertise as developers come into the community, and you use them as a conduit to say, here's the latest plat, you know, based on our desires for our community, does it fit those? Because as Len said, and Jim, what does quality development mean? And it certainly means different things to other people. One of the things I think it means to me would be sustainability. And so, you have a neighborhood that was built 25 years ago or 30 years ago, you've got a neighborhood that people still want to live in, they, the house values, maintain their values, and we don't end up with what a lot of people end up with is developers' blight, where you have neighborhoods and areas of your community that were subpar, and once the development flows through, they become less than they were, they want. And so, to me, those strategies of a quality community are ones that need to be discussed, thoughtful conversation. And then, you take a group like Gateway, and you say, here's what we want. You look at everything that we submit to you through that lens, and you tell us. And then, the council and P&amp;Z, if you want to deviate from that, or, you know, certainly have that opportunity, but at least you've had input from people who are experienced in those circles.
And then, Bob, just to follow up, the SOQ for the Parks Master Plan, too, is we've got two, one more partner, one of two that we know of, that is coming in to help kind of create the Parks Master Plan, too. So, if you want a checklist, we've got both of those things working.
Cool. The zoning ordinance review was mentioned. So, do we want to set a date or anything like that, or does the council want to come up with the time to start doing that?
Again, that is kind of, that was kind of the back end, the future scope for Gateway to kind of add on to their current stuff. So, that was, you know, that was kind of a out of all of that, too.
The other thing that I heard...
Before you leave, perhaps that could be done in two phases. Perhaps they could hit some of the high nails here in the near term, and then do more comprehensive, would be longer, just a thought, it doesn't have to be an all-in-one, rewrite.
And then, as far as intercommunication between agencies, sounds like a great idea. It sounds like it fell squarely in your lap.
I'll have to create a confidentiality form. How much of the information can I release in what we're talking about?
You got an idea of what people are looking for?
Yeah, Bill mentioned some of the developers on the south end of town, and I mean, I'd like to say that we could take some credit for the quality that we see in there, but I think it's just because of those, or what they wanted to build. I would love to get some of that in our code, and say, and not leave it to chance, not leave it to the desires of the developer, and say, here's, here's the things that we see that we might can put it in the quality. If they ask for variance, okay, we go into a lot as wide open, but at least it's in the code, and maybe it starts with a percentage of masonry. Good place to start. There's probably a dozen other things that we could ask for, without an occurring ordinance. Thanks.
All right. A three-second silent spot, is this a good time to adjourn?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
For those interested, Houston, five, LA, nothing.
We got a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Mr. Reed, would you like to say?